Now, 7 o'clock, and I'm calling the meeting of the BORN Planning Board to order. Yeah, the Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants wishing to speak must raise the hand icon, and the chair will ask them to unmute. This meeting is being recorded for live broadcast televised replay by BORN TV. If anyone is audio or visual recording, please acknowledge at this time, anybody. And will you please mute your phones if they are not muted? I think we'll start with the meeting minutes of April 25th. Does any member on the board have a comment on the meeting minutes for April 25th?
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we accept the meeting for April 25th.
All right, Jim Robinson. Second. Second, John Dugan. All in favor?
You have to do a roll call.
A roll call, I'm sorry.
Aye, yes.
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 Chair votes yes.
Dan?
Dan?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. 340 MacArthur Boulevard. This is application under section 2220 to change the land use. It's number 02-2024 SP. And also, application for waiver of site plan review, 2-2024W. Is anyone here representing that project? Hearing none. I'm going to ask the town planner about communications she's had with the Conservation's Commission and a suggested way forward.
Okay, this project is located at 340 MacArthur Boulevard. It originally was permitted as a development of regional impact through the Cape Cod Commission, which is our regional regulatory agency. Recently, we received an application for the special permit for a proposed change of use to professional and business offices and warehouse fabrication of granite from, I think the old use was recreational facility. So, I have talked to the Cape Cod Commission, and this does trigger a change of use and will require review by the Cape Cod Commission through a DRI. At that time, if the Planning Board votes to bring it back to the Cape Cod Commission, what would happen is it would trigger the review, and this special permit and site plan review application would be put on hold until the Cape Cod Commission has completed their review. Then it would come back to this board.
So, I'm thinking a motion would be in order, asking the board to move that a determination of change of use under section 3F of the chapter A of the Code of Cape Cod Commission Regulations of General Application be put forward for a vote.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second, all right. All in favor? I'm going to go with a roll call.
Yes.
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 The chair votes yes.
Dan's?
Dan?
Disappeared.
Disappeared.
Yes.
Very good. So, the motion carries, and we'll move on to the next item. Next item, 274 Williston Road. It's an enforcement action. The owners, Dana and Luanne Hannah, have submitted a proposal for remediation to the board, and would you like to speak to your plan?
I think it'd be great. Let me see, stand. This was partially our idea and partially CMS. Josh, he's the owner of CMS. We don't have a price on it. We've asked them four or five times. I called there three times today. They don't want to commit. I've had this with other contractors before. If they can get in without giving me a price, they can soak me for everything there's worth. But I gave them a budget at the beginning, and they said they'd stay inside of it. So, I think everything should be good. Other than that, I don't have much to say.
Open it up to questions from the board. Anybody?
I don't see a firm plan. I mean, I've seen a sketch with a legend. To me, that's not sufficient.
It's not a great explanation, the legend. He could have done better. Along the driveway, there's 30-something Russian cypresses. When we get along the fence on the left-hand side, there's maiden grasses. Along the right-hand side, it's maximum rhodendrons with five or six, what type of maples are these? Sugar maples, sugar maples. And along the side that it butts, what number is that? 286? Yellow house. 276. Along that side, it's clear to their shed. We don't like looking at shed. They can see through that left-hand piece. So, I suggested putting eight abovites, I think it was eight, yeah, eight abovites along there, basically to block out that little slot view. Once we get further on, there's a lot of briars, dead trees, just all kinds of stuff in there. There's a good barrier in there. So, we went with Rosa Sharon along there. Our neighbor had one in Northborough, and they were beautiful all summer. The hummingbirds were there from late spring until early fall. They blossomed all summer. I thought that would be a great idea. And that's everywhere. I know it's not the best legend.
John?
I think we've been going over this since February and spoke about having this completed by this time, so that the plants and trees would have a chance to set and grow.
Sure.
I really don't think you brought us anything significant since then. I think there's been a lot of...
We brought two plans, two separate plans. This is the third one.
Could I finish, please?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I don't think you brought anything significant based on what you heard from the board to even substantially complete the replacement of what you removed, which you were not supposed to remove. It should not be our responsibility to keep after you, to come back again and again and continue it. It's your responsibility to bring to us a plan that will replicate what you removed, which was not allowed in your order conditions that you agreed to.
What we removed mostly was green brier.
We're talking about the barrier. We're talking about a 25-foot buffer in many areas, 10 feet on either side of the drive. That's what I'm talking about.
It was the briars.
I don't care if it's briars or you are not allowed to touch it.
Right, so we could let the briars grow.
It's not letting the briars grow, I'm sorry. It's putting a barrier, a buffer, a natural barrier, that's going to replicate the kind of privacy and buffer that was there. We don't need to argue about putting in new briars that'll take years to grow. You're fully aware of what was there and what you removed and how you now are on the hook to replace it.
Well, that's what we're trying to do here.
We understand, that's what we're trying to do.
That's not a plan to do that.
So, you know, last spring, I dropped off a plan to the Planning Board, to her, and basically, it was spruces along the whole left and right-hand side, along 276, to block out 276. They were going to take two or three days to get back to me, and I had a price. I was ready to put them in. A few days later, they didn't get back. I called, they lost the plan. So, I made them another copy of the plan. I brought it back. I called on it once, maybe twice, never heard from them again until the fall. Didn't hear...
I'm sorry to interrupt. Those are your challenges, not ours.
You said we haven't done anything.
No, you have not presented us with a significant plan to replicate the natural border screen that you removed, that you were not permitted to remove, and your agreement to not remove, and your order of conditions from this board. So, all your information between you and the people you've talked to to do the work is not relevant to this. It's your responsibility.
We're trying to solve the issue.
You have not brought a reasonable solution to us.
Is this not a reasonable solution?
It is not. My opinion.
I think we should go back to briars and great briars and trash. I think it's the cheapest way out, and we'll get it as natural as we can. Those briars will be back in no time. CMS did not understand why we would go into all this effort when briars would regrow. He said they'll come up so fast, you won't believe it. We're happy to do that.
Other questions from the board? Anybody? No. I have a couple of comments. And I'm going to carry on with what John said. This plan completely ignores the remediation sketch developed by PB, and I believe sent over in early March. It seems to revert back to a variation on your original scheme, that is, the Rose Bay rhododendrons lining the stone wall, and then some other things that were facing 276. So, it appears to be the original concept with a few tweaks. The sugar maples, native plants, fine, 75 feet on center. When we do streetscapes out here, we do 40 feet on center. That's...
They were just to mix it up a little bit. That was the purpose of the maples. They weren't to, we weren't going to put in a row of maples. That was not, this was CMS's idea, and we went along with it.
Okay, well, I just think, the thing is not a great idea. Number one, it's a two-inch tree, 75 feet apart. It's a non-starter. Native plants, the Rose Bay rhodos are native, and the sugar maples are native. Everything else is exotic. And we are going for, this concept sketch that was distributed in March was all natives, and including at least a preliminary plant list of all natives.
That was a $150,000 plan, correct?
Yes.
I have no idea.
Yeah, that was.
We haven't seen any numbers that anyone is willing to stand by. So, and at the moment, the numbers are not relevant to the discussion. We've got to get to a conceptual plan that's agreeable, and then we can look at numbers. Grasses along the entry drive, those are miscanthus, they're feather reed grass, eight feet on center.
Those were along the fence, where there's already a six-foot fence there. It really does, that's as much of a blockade as...
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the 10-foot space between your driveway and 276.
Oh, that's the surface.
That's where the grass...
That's the cypress. Right now, they have...
No, that's the grass, according to the plan I have here. That's...
Yeah, the legend's not perfect.
That's the maiden grass, 32 of them.
Well, the maiden grass is supposed to be the solid lighter-colored brown line on the left-hand jog, where the white fence is, if you know where that is. That's just a mix-up on the legend.
I don't know what to do with this. I mean, if I can't match the species to the graphic...
No.
Let me continue.
Sure.
Eight feet on center. It's not an industry standard. These plants should be closer than that. I'm...
We had them at Northborough, and they were huge.
I can't speak to Northborough. I'm going to make a suggestion, a way forward here. I'm going to recommend that PB reissue the concept sketch. There may be a few things we would clarify, and we'll make a plant list, possibly with numbers, and with sizes, and with spacing, what I call an industry-standard plan. And then, that can be the basis of pricing.
If we can afford it. If we can afford it, and we agree on it. We don't have an unlimited budget. You just have to know that.
Well, you shouldn't have taken it all down.
We should go back to briars.
Please, please.
We're happy to go back to briars.
The public will have their opportunity to speak.
Most of the briars are already there along Pilgrim Road. There's 15 feet of briars, dead trees, brush vines going up in the trees. It would take little effort to fill it back into 25 feet. That is the largest portion.
Well, first off, briars are not available in the trade. So, you're not just going to step back and figure in 25 years, it's going to be the way it was before.
I'd have to add a ton of trash.
That's disrespectful. I'm just saying.
I don't think it's necessary for us to reflect on how we got here.
Okay.
When you were signing a document with a notary, your guys were out there laying waste to the place.
I don't know what the document with the notary is, I'm sorry.
It's got your signature on it. It's a covenant on your deed.
When we signed over the house, there was so...
25-foot vegetated buffer.
Right, you are.
Vegetated buffer.
Not to be disturbed.
Not to be disturbed. That's why we're here.
And that's what you signed and was stamped by a notary, and that became part of a deed restriction that will pass on to the next owner of the house.
That happened during the purchase agreement, when there were so many things that were happening with this property. That was one of the last, I know, I know we signed it.
It's a legal document.
But it wasn't...
It's all we have to go on.
I understand, I understand.
It's a deed restriction. We shouldn't be arguing about this.
I just want you to understand, it wasn't a specific, we sat down in front of a rotary, and they said, "No, you're not going to touch 25 feet." Okay, sign it. It just blended in with everything else. I just want you to understand.
I guess I understand, but I, to what end? To what end? The contractor went in and laid waste to it, all of it.
We're trying to come up with something that's going to be...
You bet, and I'm suggesting a way forward.
Okay, so, the Planning Board can draw up some sort of a plan that hopefully is not as expensive as the first one.
I don't know. I mean, CMS won't give you a price on what they developed, and they looked at the sketch plan and said that's 150K.
They promised twice that they would call me by the end of the day today.
All right, I'm just...
That doesn't matter.
You're right. Dollars are not relevant at the moment. So, I'm suggesting as a way forward, that this board develop a plan that's legible and bidable.
Okay.
And if there are other, any other comment? Well, sorry.
I have no comments at this point. I want to hear from the public before we...
If no one on Zoom has a comment, I'm going to open it up for public comments.
I really don't know if I have too much. Glenn Tripp, 276...
Will you identify yourself, please, for the record?
276, Glenn Tripp, 276 Williston Road.
Thank you.
I think a lot, what I was going to say was already discussed. I was just going to add before, I didn't know anybody was going to really speak up like that, that I think, personally, I think it's a mockery is being made of the Planning Board. I mean, we, this started in January, and if I recall, I could be wrong, but the last time that we met in April, he was supposed to come back with three plans with estimates.
One plan with three estimates.
Or whatever it was, but right now, there's only one. The original plan that he came up with, 65 rhododendrons, was pretty much shot down, and to me, this is just basically the same thing. I mean, beside the 10-foot buffer from my driveway to his driveway was supposed to be untouched. His plan is to put in something that grows 18 inches tall. What is that? It was supposed to be native, left alone. And yet, here we are still, you know? There's nothing I can do about it, but I just don't understand why we keep coming back here with the same old thing. And so, now, this is going to be, the next meeting will be the fit meeting, with probably no plan again. So, I don't know, I don't know this gentleman's name, but I agree with totally everything he said.
Yeah.
The fix-it thing, like, he was talking about behind my shed with the aphrodites, I believe you mentioned, it's like a substation chain leak fence. You put the chain leak fence around the electrical substation, and you put the aphrodites around it to hide it. That's not what was supposed to be done. I'm still looking out, my, you know, I go in my backyard, 25 feet from my lot line's not supposed to be touched, but yet, the grass is still being mowed. It's two, you know, three, four, five feet away from the lot line. There's not supposed to be anything, but the landscapers are still coming in there and mowing the lawn, whatever, so, there's like no stop to it.
This is a process, and however incremental...
Well, I mean, to me, now, now, we're going to wait another month for a plan, and then now, it's going to go past the growing season, so, this is probably not going to happen till next spring, because it's going to be, no, no, I'm just, the original thing was, the plan was supposed to come for springtime planting, so that they would root and make it through the summer, but now, summer is almost upon us. So, I just have a feeling that whatever is put in, if anything is put in, whether it makes it through the summer or not, you know, those are just, so, I'm just thinking, maybe next spring, again. So, I don't know if I have anything else, but I just think that this is going on too long, and something needs to be done.
All right, thank you. All the comments from the public.
Hi, Gina Zerb, what's the PCCASIT? Formerly on the Planning Board. And when we met in March, and Doc and I had come up with the sketch and the list of plants, it was said at that meeting with Jen and Julia, that you were going to have to do the best you could with the concept that we gave you and the plant list, and...
Get a price.
The point is to restore, it's a restorative, restore the vegetation. The price is unfortunately something that you have to, it's a burden you have to carry, but our goal is to get the border revegetated. And you had conditions, and they weren't followed, and that was said at that meeting. And at this last meeting, when the plan came forth, we discussed it, you tried to return it to me, and I said, "You need to hang on to it, because you need to use those plant varieties."
We gave it to CMS for them to use. What they used often, I don't know. But they were the ones to develop the plan.
I'm sorry, you didn't communicate accurately that they should have used the plants that were on that plan. And this has been going on as an enforcement issue since last, 2023, and I've got emails going all the way back to 2021, 2020, from the Butters that have been concerned about this all along. It's, it is embarrassing, and it's getting to a point where it just can't be continued on and on. So, we have to have a resolution, and we're just going to have to do the best we can to actually enforce this and make sure that, I mean, I drove by there recently, and I can't believe the vacuum there is there of the vegetation.
Did you see the new row of abovites giants along the other side of the driveway? Right now, we have a row of abovites on one side of the driveway that will be abutting our property in two years. We have another row of eight-foot giants along the left side of the driveway that will be abutting our property in two years. Right now, we're driving through a cave of trees. The last thing we need is more trees in an area this wide on an angle like this. I mean, maybe some little bushes in there scattered around, but not another row of trees.
Those conditions were in place before.
Fracture briars, that's all I can say, to keep everybody happy.
That won't be your decision.
Unfortunately, you didn't meet the conditions. You were supposed to leave it alone, and I'm sorry that you didn't like the aesthetics of the lot that you have and what's there, but you should have left it alone and stuck to the conditions, and we wouldn't be in this situation, so...
That section was gone long before we touched it. That was the excavator that did that. It had nothing to do with us.
Well...
Was, whose excavator was it?
Dunrick.
Who was doing work for who?
He was working on the building.
Do you want to come up to the mic, anyway?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
That's all that matters.
Do the best you can, yeah.
Any other public comments? Yes. Step to the microphone, please, give us your name.
Joan Buchanan, Pilgrim Road, but also on Williston. We talked about the bushes, but there's one area in which I've measured recently, and that's on the 276 line on the driveway. That is a stoned, hardtop area, slope where he removed soil. You can't plant on an impermeable situation that is there now, and there was nothing in the plan that related to being able to plant anything, except maybe 10 to 12 inches of little bit of grass area that he has now. But that sloping hard wall, there's no way anything can grow in it.
No, but it can be planted through.
Can I speak on that?
Yes, sir.
The reason that we went with stone was because of the slope, and we're not going with most areas or the minimum, minimum as we can. We can't pull weeds anymore. We've pulled weeds for too many years. A slope like that is too steep to mow. We're not going to mow to that left stone. There was another, Six Oak Meadow Drive, we lived there for 25 years. All around the house, we had...
Excuse me, you need to go to the microphone, so people can hear you speak.
My mistake.
We lived at Six Oak Meadow Drive in Northborough for 25 years. One of the nicest areas was the stone that we had in front of the house, where we had views and different plantings. It was called Three Quarter Inch, Pennsylvania Red Shale, and it was the prettiest stone I've ever seen anywhere. Weeds did not come up out of it. Mulch weeds pop up everywhere, they grow out of the mulch. Stone, nothing comes up, but we found one weed a year. It was like a big deal, a weed. Stone makes a great bed. It keeps the weeds down, and it keeps the plants warmer in the winter. They just, plants do really well in stone, and they do great. I wanted the red shale here, because we had it for 25 years, anything different. We had round sinks, rectangular sink, everything had to be a little bit different, because we had it for so long. But no, stone makes an excellent bedding. Six Oak Meadow Drive, you can maybe, you can look at it, it's, I'm sure it's still there. They offered $100,000 over asking, because they liked the yard so much. The stone was, our main bed out in the front had a big paper maple maple like this in it, and a couple of weeping Japanese maples. It was all in the red shale. They did great in it. Just wanted to let you know, the stone is a great bedding material.
Jim?
Can we start talking about Northborough? As Doc said, we are referring to BORN. You keep referring back to Northborough. We don't follow their rules. We try to follow the environmental rules set forth. You didn't pay attention, and as Mr. Farrell said, you said, "Who was the excavator?" Well, who was the excavator working for? He was working for the builder. Who was the builder working for? He was working for you. You own that build.
I just wanted, anybody that didn't know, that stone is an excellent bedding material. It does not need to be removed. You can put all kinds of plantings in there. It will do great with the stone there. That's the only reason I mentioned Northborough.
Other questions from the public?
There's really another question. I'm sure that most of the people listening to this will already agree with me, but we're not talking, the deal was, and signed, notarized, natural vegetation. Rocks ain't vegetation. So, let's stop talking about the stones. The stone's got to go and vegetate the area. That's all.
Other comments?
Did we want to read this out loud?
I can't hear you, sorry.
Do you want to read this out loud, this letter from Liz, or no?
If you'd like, certainly.
Do you want me to?
Sure.
Do you want me to do it? Okay, this is a letter from Liz Brown, Vice Chair. She said, "Regarding 274 Williston, for several meetings now, we have listened to excuses and defenses regarding the excessive clearing done at 274 Williston in violation of the deed restrictions placed on the property. And I am hopeful that they will submit a viable remediation plan for the meeting on May 23rd. As I will not, as I will not be there to express my sentiments in person, I wanted you to have this for the record as part of the discussion about the next steps, should the plan fall short. First, I have never heard from the owner express any regret about his behavior. He seems determined to convince us that he simply did as instructed. This is not true. I remember well the discussions around the property, and I assume too that he was well aware of these." I remember well the discussions around the property and I assume too that he was well aware of these. I know for a fact that these neighbors spoke up about their concerns regarding screening and the board took these concerns seriously, which is why we imposed the deed restrictions in the first place. There is no misunderstanding here.
I missed that one, say it again.
You were required to make it right. We bent over backwards to provide him with guidance. In fact, he's had a free professional guidance from two very well-qualified landscape designers on our board. And all we have received so far are plans which fall short of what is required. We have been patient. However, our patience is not boundless and I'd like to see the fines and penalties imposed. I understand that this undertaking is an expense, but it is one that you've brought on yourself and you seem to have, and he seems to have the resources to undertake things that he deems a priority, such as vista pruning. This remediation is also a priority, even though he rails against it. We all live here, we all live with invasive vines and weeds and they need, and they need to be pruned. We all have yards and gardens to maintain. And we all also know that there are many plant alternatives that will grow in a manageable way, even in a very small space. We are not presenting him with an insurmountable obstacle and you are not the victim here. It is time to step up and do as what is required. Liz Brown, Vice Chair, Bourne Planning Board.
Mr. Farrell?
Mr. Chair, I think we've gone back and forth on this enough. So therefore, I'm going to make a recommendation that this board send this over to code enforcement and that the code enforcement officers start implementing fines of $25 a day. This particular applicant has woefully and calculated plans to ignore the agreed-upon conditions. He agreed upon it, signed the documents and everything else. They want to plant what they want to plant, nothing else. They want to dictate how much they're going to spend. They shouldn't have any rights on that. They're going to have to restore this to what they agreed upon. It's a land court-deeded document and right now this can go to code enforcement for the appropriate actions. That would be my recommendation, that we send it back to code enforcement. I believe the fines are $25 a day until completed. We can also, in the meantime, if the applicant comes up with a suitable plan or something that you provide or this board provides to them and they are in agreement upon it, then we can maybe negate the fines. But for right now, without any consequences to him, this is going to, as Jim pointed out and a couple of other people, this is going to drag out forever and ever. And I just don't think we should have to listen to it anymore.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have some discussion?
Absolutely.
I'm going to suggest that we consider a hybrid approach. That is, as soon as the complaint comes in, is it 14 days? Do you happen to have the timeframe when the fines start?
Well.
14 days.
The, yeah, it's only enforcement, building commissioner has 14 days to respond. The penalties are actually $50.
$50, okay. Inflation.
Per day.
I would, I would like the board to have an opportunity to clarify the sketch plan a little bit. I think it was most of the way there and reissue it for discussion at the next meeting. We can move pretty smartly on this. Have it to the Hannahs in a week and come back for the next meeting. If we are not satisfied, then the complaint goes forward?
I, I could agree with that because I do think that this board can guide them with a better plan than anything that they've provided with us. So, I'd be willing to withdraw my motion at this point to send it to code enforcement. Give them one more shot and if we can't resolve this by the next meeting, then send it to code enforcement.
Could you put that in a motion, please?
Yeah. Okay, my motion is to withdraw my previous motion.
Withdraw, second. Is everyone agreed? John?
Yes.
Yes.
Reluctantly, yes.
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 Dan?
A new motion, please.
New motion would be the board, this board supply, guide this applicant with a revegetation plan and we meet at our next scheduled meeting. And if that's all agreed upon, then it won't go to code enforcement. And it's, and as far as the cost goes, it doesn't matter.
I'm sorry, as far as the what?
The cost of it. So, we're going to supply a guidance on it and next meeting, we agree to it or not.
Are you a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I don't see anybody on Zoom. So, there we have it. We will generate a plan, try and get it to you within a week. You get it priced and it doesn't have to be CMS. Come back to us on the
June 13th.
June 13th. And we'll see if we can agree that it is something to go on or whether an enforcement action is then moved.
June 13th, the meeting?
Thursday, a second Thursday of the month. June 13th, I think.
Yes.
Come to the microphone, please.
I know the legend was not as clear. I know the legend was not as clear as it should have been. That CMS disappointed with them, but the plan itself seemed very good. The grasses were a little bit too far.
We should stop, we should stop. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it is just a minor tweak on the original plan.
No, no. It's not, it's nothing like the original plan. The original plan was maximum rhododendrons all the way across that end. There was nothing along the driveway, there was nothing along the fence. It was not a minor tweak, it's totally different, totally different.
We're going to look at what the planning board comes up with and take it to a landscaper and see.
I just love, love that plan. I mean, the grass, we want them closer together, that's not an issue. We can, we can put them three feet apart if you want.
Jim?
We've been going through this for too long, okay? Ms. Brown put a very clear letter forth. There has been numerous times, people, not myself because I'm not in that
Sure.
knowledgeable.
Sure.
I'm still in the education phase. But the plan has been put in front of you. You have changed or come back, you have, it's in your deed, you've signed. It's your contract that you paid. But what, before you interrupt me.
I'm not going to.
The board made a recommendation that you've got 13th, you've got to have something on the table. Because after that, I'm going to vote not reluctantly, voting yes, to send it to the enforcement.
We've done everything that the board has asked us to do. We have not come back with excuses, we couldn't do it.
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry. No, you haven't. We've done this week after week. We've just made a vote. I'm going to ask you politely, let's just move on. We'll provide you with a plan and we'll see you in two weeks.
I'm just trying to
Nope, nope, we're done.
We're done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda.
You want to inform the people on Zoom?
Oh, yeah.
That they're already done?
Yeah.
I don't want to address them though. You might want to know if they're here for that.
Sure. The only ones voting are presumably planning board members. Can we unmute, please? Unmute?
Go ahead, the guy with the glasses with his hand up, you can unmute and talk. There you go.
We can't understand what you're saying.
Try it again.
They're both unmuted. One of you has to mute.
Let's try it again. One of you speak, please.
Guy in the white shirt.
They have two microphones on in the same room.
Two microphones on.
Technology.
I think so, but I can't make it out.
We have, we have voted a motion as the town planner has received a communication from the Cape Cod Commission saying that this proposal is going to have to go back to you. Let's see, the exact wording was, this proposal has been returned to the Cape Cod Commission for determination of a change of use under Section 3F of Chapter A of the Cape Cod, Code of Cape Cod Commission Regulations of General Application. So, that has been turned over to the Cape Cod Commission. They'll be in touch with you, I imagine. You may want to contact them. They will determine the change of use.
Okay, sir, perfect. I got a question for your best house. I want to ask permission for you guys to work on the building. I ask this house permission, the permit, which you have to work the building back.
If I'm hearing you right, you're asking to work on the building before the permits have been received. Is that approximately right?
No, we're paying for the permits, wait. And the permits has been waiting for the, I need to stay.
I don't know, the pyramid? Permit.
Building, interior building work.
So, that's a separate.
That's separate.
Like that interior.
But it's not.
But you, have you received your permit yet?
No, sir.
The answer then is no.
No, did you get that? I want to do the building permit, not you the permit.
It has to go through this process. It has to go through this process.
Yes, it has to go through the Cape Cod Commission. And generally Generally, if you don't have a permit, you can't work on the building. And I'm told that all of this has to go through the Cape Cod Commission before it comes back to the town for an actual interior building permit. The change of use is still in play. So
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Let me mention one more thing. I was out on MacArthur Boulevard. We will talk in the future about the land clearing. But I also noticed storage units fronting MacArthur Boulevard. I don't think you have a permit for those either, do you?
So
The storage units fronting MacArthur Boulevard, there's probably between eight and 12 of them. More?
28.
28?
It's three containers over there.
Yes, they are, but you don't have a permit for them. They should go. I hope we're being clear.
What are they storing?
So, actually, just actually, just to follow up on what Doc said, if they do need to go, when do you plan on getting rid of those? Just, just
Many storage, let's take them back to the house.
So, those are an unpermitted use.
Right, so can we get rid of those this week?
Tomorrow.
That would be good.
Tomorrow would be great.
Well, you're allowed to have
We recognize that it's a holiday weekend, but it should be done directly.
Yes, that's right. I thought it was Saturday, but tomorrow, but we started working out of the way for removing out of there.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it all, you board, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, election of officers. So, chairman, I will enter 10 nominations for the chairman.
I would nominate Chris Farrell.
Chris Farrell, seconds?
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for chair?
Well, I want to ask to stand, I mean, to stand, I mean, I'm sure you guys have talked about this.
He was on, he was on here earlier.
As well, I mean, have you guys talked about that or, you know what I mean? Okay.
Dan's on there, he's on there. Hi, Dan.
Hey, how you guys doing?
You don't look like you want to be chair. You don't look like you want to be anywhere near here.
I am here, I am here in spirit and in full heart. I do appreciate you guys and I support that nomination, thank you, guys.
All right, then. Any other nominations for chair? Let's have a vote.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Sure, you can vote, all right.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes, I already said, I already told everybody, I came in third.
Okay, all right, just checking.
I'm sorry?
Vice Chair, I make a
Oh, no, no.
We need Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, any nominations of position of Vice Chair?
Mr. Farrell? I would like to see Jim Robinson step up. I've worked with him on a couple of projects. I think he's really starting to get a good grasp of things and I think this would be the right move to start to bring some new people up. Dan and I aren't going to be here forever, guys.
Sure.
Been here for 20-plus years, both of us, so.
Yeah, but we've already had a discussion that you're not going to leave until everybody's been going, okay? Right, that's a plan. All right.
All right, then. I haven't heard anything from Liz and I assume let's vote.
Has anybody heard from Liz?
Oh, what about, yeah, do we, do we want to ask her too? Oh, she's not here, okay, all right, good.
John?
That's when you put them in.
I think
Not when they're ready, right there.
Yes.
Yes, I think they do a great job.
Yes.
Let's shake it up.
Nice job.
All right.
Who's buying tonight?
It's an awesome responsibility.
I'll
Two heartbeats away from the chair. It's a tough job and I'm making a recommendation that John Duggan for clerk.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
So, because you made that recommendation, I'm guessing that you don't want to keep on with this powerful doing.
I've done it, I've got that box checked. It's tough giving it up. I haven't bought a drink for myself since I've, since I've taken off.
Oh, no.
Is this the one and only meeting you've had this year?
Excuse me, guys, can somebody vote on me?
Second.
I have started.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, then, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Very good, nicely done. Congratulations.
Congratulations.